Okay, I'd like to call this special Cleveland Heights City Council meeting to order. It is Friday, August 29th at 6:00 PM. Gail, would you please call the roll?
Just going to go left to right. Councilwoman Petrus?
Here.
Councilwoman Larson, here. Councilwoman Cobb?
Here.
President Kuta?
Here.
Council -- Vice President Russell?
Here.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Pash?
Here.
And Councilwoman Maddox is on Zoom. Can we hear you, Councilwoman Maddox?
Yes, thank you guys so much.
Perfect, absolutely perfect. All right, so no amendments to the agenda before we do the public hearing. I want to just do a quick charter review timeline, just to kind of catch people up, and then we'll go to -- actually, one more thing before that, and then we'll go to public comment. So in December of 2022, this is what's happened so far with the charter review. Council passed legislation and actually created a nine-member Charter Review Commission. In June, the Charter Review Commission was seated and began their work. From June 2023 to June 2024, almost exactly a year, they hold over a dozen of public meetings, dozens of public meetings. They interviewed many public officials and others, and held public hearings as well. All of this recorded. In June of 2024, the Charter Review Commission presented their recommendations to City Council. And then in August, we, City Council, created a timeline for our work on the charter. We were going to review the charter review work, because only council can put the charter on the ballot. And then in the fall, we held a series of public meetings, made suggestions. In April, we turned it over. We turned over our work to the Law Department. And then in -- let's see, where am I? And then in June, I let council know that we were going to have to have extra meetings in August because of the deadline for putting it on the ballot with the Board of Elections. So in August, that's this month of 2025, we began making our final tweaks. And then, how do I -- let's see, how do I go to the next slide? I have a -- I don't have a keyboard, so I wonder if that's over. Is that this keyboard? I'm sorry. Thank you. Should've known. All right. Let me see. Oh, this -- I'm just pressing the arrows here. No, no good. And I think that's all I need. All right. And then on August 25th, we held our first public hearing and did a first reading of the legislation, keeping in mind that the charter changes are a draft until we actually go and vote. And then on August 28th, we held an additional meeting that was yesterday, and then today, another public hearing. So September 2nd, which is Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, that's when we'll do the second reading and hopefully vote on this, keeping in mind that there's the September 4th deadline for the Board of Elections. And then residents will have two months to decide whether or not to adopt this amended charter. So I want to say a couple of things. First of all, that by the middle of August, we were 98% done. And what we're doing now, or the final tweaks, all of the proposed amendments that are in this charter appear in many, many other charters. If you're wondering why we're doing this, it's because there's something called the single-subject rule in the state of Ohio. That means that when citizens are doing a referendum, or in this case, putting a charter amendment on, they can only do one topic. So they could not work on the entire charter. They could only work on one topic, and the topic they chose was to change the form of government from a city manager form of government to an elected mayor form of government. So all of the changes that you need to make an elected mayor form of government were yet to be done. That was left to the City Council. So the Law Department, City Council, and I want to say a special thanks again to the Charter Review Commission. Again, this is over two and a half years' worth of work, and they vetted all these changes. And so that's where we are today. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was that I don't -- I didn't really get a sense that there was support, because we didn't really seem to get support from council on Article 4, Section 9, which was the removal of the mayor. So just to get this out of the way, I'd like to hear from everybody on council. Again, this is Article 4, Section 9.
Section 6, Mr. President.
All right. Unfortunately, I'm looking at a redline copy where it was -- thank you.
Hard to read through, yeah.
It is Article 4, Section 6?
Yes.
Okay. I knew it. So I have -- yeah, my redline copy is a couple days old. Yeah, Article 4, Section 6. This is removal?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to state again that I'm not for any move that would allow council to usurp any power that should be given to the public, and so I'm absolutely dead set against that. I think the process that we have in place allows the public to speak for themselves, and I think councils should remove themselves from that. It just opens us up in terms of political risk, and I feel the same way about council being able to remove its own members. I think we need to have strong conversation, and the feedback I'm getting about the public is still stating that they want that power solely in their hands at the ballot box. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we hear from everybody. I mean, I -- yeah, is this the today's draft? Okay. So again, Article 4, Section 6, removal. Page 12? Okay. We're not there yet. We're going to do public comment in a couple minutes. Councilwoman Larson?
I would be in favor of removing that change and put it back to what it was before.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other? Councilman Cobb?
I think that provision went in on my suggestion, and in light of the public comments that we've received on it, I think it would be a good idea to remove that section. In respect to the provision regarding City Council, that is in our current charter. And I believe that it should remain.
I too support removing the provision about removal of the mayor. And if I remember correctly, because Councilman Cobb just talked about the provision about council being able to remove another council member, I feel like I saw that that was in here since at least 1972, and so I support keeping it as is.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Pash?
Honestly, I'm indifferent. However, I think there's other aspects of this to get us to a place where we have good government again. And I don't want these provisions regarding removal of the mayor and removing council members to cast a cloud on the importance of all the other things that are in this document. I think it's more important. I think it's a real anomaly that we'd ever find ourselves in the position where we'll be removing one of us or removing the mayor. I mean, I can't -- I mean, it's such a high standard. I can't imagine, even with everything that's been going on even this year, and what we've been asked repeatedly, "Well, why don't you do something?" You know, "Why don't you remove him?" And it's like, "Well, we can't remove him." I don't think -- I don't think I would have ever done it. You know, I can't speak for everybody here. But I don't believe if it's going to -- if these two provisions are going to hold us up from getting the other things passed, I think we should just part that work. We should just part those two.
Vice President Russell?
I'm for removing it.
Okay. And I'm also for removing Article 4, Section 6. I do think that the provision that's been in there for 50 years, I see it -- I see that provision in almost every charter. And, you know, the fact that, I mean, it was just not really -- I just don't see that in particular as a problem.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just to clarify that, I was fully aware that it was there, and I've stated since before I was elected that it's been problematic. I think if it's going to remain, this council needs to be cautious about what that looks like, and we need to put some type of guardrails around that. Because as it's written, it still states that this council could make rules and then cause someone to decide they violated those rules and have them removed. That's still a problem. And just because it hasn't happened doesn't mean it hasn't been under discussion, and it has since I've been on this council.
Do you have a suggestion to the wording?
Yeah, I think we need to remove anything that has to do with violating council rules, unless we're going to be very specific about what types of rules those are. Otherwise, they could arbitrarily be created just to have someone removed. I still think that we need to take a look at that language, because council should not have that kind of power to be to remove one of its members simply because they violated a council rule. And what does that violation mean? What does it look like? So I think we still need to explore that, because right now, we're still usurping the power of the people if that was to take place. And just because it hasn't happened doesn't mean that it can't. And again, it's been my experience since I've been in council that twice, rules have been created to try to enforce exactly that rule. So there needs to be some type of guardrails around this, so that it's, again, squarely with the voters. The fact that it's there doesn't mean that it should be. There needs to be some type of clarity to tighten that up.
Yeah, let me see what others think about removing the -- could you tell me, that's Article 3, Section --
3.
3. Article 3, Section 3, on page 2. Any thoughts on the removal of the part that says the council rules and a violation of council rules? I want to take a look at this.
Mr. President?
Yes?
If I might, I think that -- and I hope I didn't just cut anyone off, but given the other language in that section, and with reference to the councilmen's concerns that new rules could be developed, you know, for a particular purpose, I don't think that it takes away a lot from sort of the purpose of the section, which has been there, as you said, for a long time, to remove that particular basis for removal. And if that helps to guard against, you know, a disparate impact, or the ability of somebody to try to do something to get at a particular council person in the future, that would be a good thing.
So, I'm sorry, could you explain how the part about council rules does not substantively affect the ability of the council to remove somebody? I didn't quite get that.
Well, right now, it does. It says that a persistent failure to abide by the rules of the council can be a basis for removal. But there's language in there about malfeasance, and the council has proposed including misfeasance or nonfeasance. I think that those are the sort of bad acts that have a better-developed understanding under Ohio law and are not contingent upon or subject to council coming up with new rules, which I think is the concern that I'm hearing from the councilmen.
Absolutely, 100%. You stated that clearly, 100%. That's it.
So in my view, from the legal side, I don't think that council loses much meaningful control over its members by removing that. And if it makes it less susceptible to abuse in the future, that seems like a good thing.
All right. Well, I can go along with that. Councilwoman Larson?
So we're talking about removing the words "or persistent failure to abide by the rules of the council." I would agree with that.
Sure.
Any other comments about Councilwoman Petrus?
I too, I'm fine with removing that.
Others?
I'm okay removing it.
Yep.
All right. Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
All right, we're off to a good start. All right, let's get to public comment, because that's why you're here, and we're very anxious to hear from you. Councilwoman Larson, call the first person. You have three minutes. Just state your name and the street you live on.
Lee Barbie.
Good evening. My name is -- sorry. My name is Lee Barbie. I live at 1048 Hereford Road. And I was here yesterday -- oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was working. Well, I was here yesterday, and as I said yesterday, and I will reiterate it today, is that I feel that this whole direction of the charter review and trying to put this on the ballot is pushing us back to where we were before, prior to 2019. And I just feel like we're headed back to a president of council having more authority than the mayor. And I only went yesterday when I was here, there were only two members here that was against that, and that was Councilman Maddox and Councilman Russ -- I mean, Vice President Russell. And again, I say that this is -- this measure is just too soon to be put in on this ballot. I feel like now is not the time to put this on the ballot. I feel anyone who is running for mayor at this present time is cutting their power off. And I just don't think that this is not the time to do this. And I will be having a series of information and awareness meetings, and even Cleveland.com came out with the article today stating the same thing that I said yesterday, that this is a bad move and this appears to be going backwards instead of forwards as a council. And I support what they said, but I don't support that they said all of council needs to be removed. I just support what they said about that this is going in a backwards position, and that's how I feel about it. And I will be having information and awareness meetings in the community to address this issue.
Thank you.
Cheryl Dean Davis?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dean Davis. I live on Berkeley Road, and I had two questions, but I want to start with the first one. Why is it important to make the changes now instead of waiting till after the 2025 general election and swearing in? And do the current council members have the qualifications, expertise, and experience to govern the authority roles proposed in Ordinance 169, 2025? And my second concern is, please provide us with the reasoning, the development process of Ordinance 169, 2025, which would place proposed first amended charter changes on the November 4th election. We had ba -- I'm sorry, ballot. There was two public input meetings, which you showed in your timeline, in 2024, in May and February, and now we've had three public hearings and readings in one week a year later. So what's the current urgency? So I'd like to have both of those questions answered, please.
I think council will address in our council comments after the comments are done, so you --
Okay.
Are you planning on hanging around?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
I'll be here.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Andre Craig?
Good evening. Andre Craig, East Derbyshire, resident for 38 years. I would like to see -- I worked for the city of Cleveland during the -- as a prosecutor during the Vorhevich and Forbes era, and I would certainly like to see a vision of these two people, two different parties, one council, one mayor, who worked cooperatively to lead us out of the abyss that Cleveland was in at the time. So I'd like to see a charter, like see an organization, a structure, where you'd have that balance that would promote cooperative responses to what the city needs.
Thank you.
Muriel Craig?
Hi, I'm Muriel Craig, and I live on East Derbyshire. I'm very concerned that this is rushed and that we're having all of these meetings to decide this just before the holiday. That's my one comment. My other comment is that you sort of addressed it a little bit when you did a poll as to how everybody feels about the charter, proposed charter as written, and you've answered that question that I had written on the paper, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Linda Strieffsky?
Hi, my name is Linda Strieffsky, 2222 Delamere. I was the chair of the Charter Review Commission that worked in 2023 and 2024. My comments tonight reflect my views, and I don't speak for the commission, although I do thank them for their work. I supported the commission's report and almost all of the charter changes recommended by the commission. I also have attended or watched the recordings of all the council committee, the whole meetings that focused on the commission's recommendations. I think there have been six of those meetings since the commission's report was delivered, and I appreciate the considerable time spent by most members of council in deliberating changes to the charter and their thoughtfulness in the discussions. And I do support council's proposed charter. I think that their -- whatever changes they made to the commission's recommendations are -- they're fine with me. I wanted to just comment on one other issue, because I've had a couple of questions come up about this and seen them online. There seems to be some confusion about the provisions proposed by the commission concerning salary. So I want to make it clear that no elected official who talked to us asked for any changes to the salary provisions. The prior Charter Review Commission, the one that was started in 2019, and the one that I served on, both suggested that council review salaries of the council and the mayor every four years. They don't have to make changes every four years, but they should review the salaries and get recommendations from the Civil Service Commission as to whether the salaries are appropriate. I want to point out that the salary for council has been the same since 2004. That's a long time to have the same salary numbers. The current salary is $9,000, and currently, the council president receives 25% more due to the extra workload. So that's not a change to have the council president get 25% more. It's not like Council President Kuta said, "Could you please give me some more money here?" That did not happen. This is all on the commission, thinking that if we want to have good people beyond council, and especially if we want good people to want to be mayor, you have to have a salary that's going to be kept current and that's going to be sufficient in order to attract good candidates. Finally, I want to point out that, given the fact that the salaries have been the same since 2004, we've obviously demonstrated that our city officials are not in a rush to give themselves raises frequently. That's why we ask them to look at it periodically, because they're not in the habit of looking for raises for themselves. But I also want to point out that if city council were to decide to increase salaries, it is not effective immediately. It only becomes effective for the next term, and that's under Ohio law. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Len Friedson?
Len Friedson.
Hi, my name is Len Friedson, 3065 Brookshire Road. I do want to mention to everybody here and the council that I did bring some Heights observers in with me today, just to -- if anybody would like to have them, I deliver them. I deliver some of them, not all.
I used to be a paper boy.
Yeah. I spoke here yesterday morning. I articulated at that time several issues that I have with the charter as written, and I do not fully support everything that's in the current charter. But it's only a handful of things. I articulated them briefly yesterday. I will repeat that. The removal of the mayor and subsequently the removal of a council member is an issue that is big. The issues regarding departments and directors is big. And the issue of recall of the mayor and petition requirements, I think, is big. I'm going to make remarks only addressing those issues today, but I am here to say I have a proposal for you, and you've already gone half the way for me by even entertaining notions of removing things. So my proposal is to satisfy the two goals of getting something on the ballot in November and removing some things that need more attention. And I think we can accomplish both. You've already suggested removing Article 6 -- excuse me, Article 4, Section 6, and I'm assuming that it is removed in its entirety. Am I correct in that?
That's what I understand.
That's what I understand, too. I'm also suggesting that we revert anything with regard to the removal of a council member to the prior language. Don't touch it. Leave it as it has been. Nobody's hair is going to get on fire about this. Leave it the way it was. We'll address it in the future.
I think that's where we're at.
No, we're talking about tweaking it. Don't tweak it, revert it. I feel strongly about that.
So on that point, and I won't take up your time, but the current language includes the language that we're talking about removing.
I understand, sir. But it's been there for years?
Yeah.
Revert it. With regard to departments, Article 5, Section 1, remove all the changes with regard to that regarding departments, all of them. Same article, Section 2, with directors. Remove the changes related to Paragraph 1 and Paragraph 3. These have to do with powers of the mayor. I don't think we're ready to address that today, and I don't think we're ready to address it in November either. With regard to the recall of a mayor, there's been proposed to reduce the petition requirements from 25% to 15%. I specifically request that we postpone that decision for greater clarity -- no, not greater clarity, greater discussion. I think there's a strong argument to be made that we should not do that. And last but not least, I want to support you on getting something on the charter -- excuse me, on the ballot in November. I think we can do this. Let's get the tough issues, which are -- I can count them on one hand, get them out of the charter. Let's move forward with the changes that we already need and already have identified. Thank you. I have copies of this if you want it.
Len?
Sure.
Okay. No, that's all right.
You're good, thank you.
Why we're here?
Oh, no.
No, no, remember, we called you back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lou Radaboyevich?
Never thought I'd be at council on a Friday night. My name's Lou Radaboyevich. I live on Middlehurst Road. Let me state that I'm totally against this 43-page, one-big, beautiful charter amendment being on the ballot this fall in its current form. A few quick details that troubled me are reducing the number of petitions for a recall from 25% to 15%. Not knowing exactly what the changes that you introduced that were different from what the committee, and why. Not knowing if this is a finished document in hand. I've got 825 in my hand, and I keep seeing revisions. Lots of changes are going on here. Council determining the functions and duties of each department, and the need for council blessing for the hiring and firing of department heads. And I only made it to page 27 over the last two days. Are you really sure you want a CEO, a leader who knows how to build culture from the top down? Because the job description is sounding a lot like a management position. Equally as disappointing is your timing and your definition of public meetings. The timing. There is no immediate benefit And I only made it to page 27 over the last two days. Are you really sure you want a CEO, a leader who knows how to build culture from the top down? Because the job description is sounding a lot like a management position. Equally as disappointing is your timing and your definition of public meetings. The timing, there is no immediate benefit to push this thing through right now, zero. We need to focus on who will be our next mayor and the recall, period. Our plate is full. Anything else is simply a lack of courtesy to the residents. Our charter, our constitution deserves our undivided attention with a clear head and a calmer environment. We need our new mayor to have the opportunity to share her or his feedback. Not doing so shows a lack of respect to the executive branch and a lack of courtesy to the new mayor. Worse yet, you just set the tone and the culture of the future council-mayor relationship, and that's not a good one. We're exhausted from what we've been dealing with. Public meetings. We have had a major disconnect on what you consider a public meeting and what many of us consider a public meeting. My last public meeting about this charter took place in April or May at the library, and it was excellent. It was the wrapping up of their findings. And since then, you've basically been holding private meetings that are technically called public meetings because you've got it on livestream. But you've done nothing to date that was anything close to what was done at the library when they wrapped up. That's what the people are looking for. You know, it's, we need a genuine public hearing to just, just to discuss the changes you made and why you did them. Allow us to understand your thought process. In closing, this has no business going on on the ballot this fall. To my fellow neighbors watching this, if anything I said resonates with you, please share your dismay at the next council meeting on September 2, or email addybalistor@abbalister, A-B-A-L-E-S-T-E-R, at clevelandheights.gov. Thank you.
Drew Herzig.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road. Three reasons why I'm opposed to the council going forward on this. It really doesn't matter how much time the Charter Review Commission put in on working on this or how long the council has sat on this, which has been for over a year. The public has had zero time to look at a final document. You are changing it even tonight. So you have never had a final document for public review. That is so undemocratic kind of thing. Possibly, there will be an online version sometime Tuesday, hours before the council meeting. You have never had a final draft of this sort of thing. I don't care how long you've been having committee of the hall meetings or that sort of thing. There is still no final draft for public review. How can you claim to have a public review when you have still a moving target? You had, and don't tell me it's been about 99%. You had significant changes tonight. You agreed to remove language about the mayor recall or removing a council. That's huge. That may be 1%, but that was huge. And just parenthetically on that, the language about council rules, I suggest you keep out. What if a council, not this council, but what if a council came up with a rule against the wearing of a hijab? You could kick out a counselor for wearing hijabs, so that is completely undemocratic, and that language should stay removed, as you mentioned today. But because you've had no final version ever for public review, you should not move forward on this. You're making a mockery of public review. Secondly, there should not be a unitary, one, one package kind of a thing. The Charter Review Commission broke this up into separate possible amendments. That was when we had our public hearings on this, we presented them as separate amendments. Later on, the council, the Commission decided to package them in just two things with the ranked choice voting and this unitary thing. It should not be this way. You've had over a year to get public review to break this up and kind of thing, because nobody should be forced to vote yes or no on all these things. Some of them are truly objectionable. I lobbied very hard to get some of this charter revision in there kind of thing, but I will vote against this because there are a number of poison pills in there. So this should not be a single resolution kind of thing. This should be broken up, partly because this is one of the most anti-democratic things I have ever seen. This basically puts five counselors, gives them more power than all the voters in Cleveland Heights kind of thing. It reduces the mayor to an elected city manager office with actually less autonomy than a city manager would enjoy kind of things. So it is extremely undemocratic. So your process, you do not have a finished version, and yet you are saying you're taking public input on this. The public should not be required to vote yes or no on this complete package because there are parts that are completely objectionable. And if you broke it up, you could put ranked choice voting on the ballot in November. If you had taken your time and done that, we could have been voting on ranked choice voting this November. Instead, that's, that's been capsized. And there are parts of this proposed revision of the charter that are extremely undemocratic that disenfranchise the voters of Cleveland Heights and put five counselors in charge, utterly opposed to this.
Michelle Jackson.
My name is Michelle Jackson, and I'm with Rank the Vote Ohio. I'm not a Cleveland Heights voter, but we have been here for a couple of years, from Charter Review Commission through talking to city counselors, and I've been out for a year talking to the public about ranked choice voting. There were a couple of things in the summary that was handed out yesterday. I guess that came from the Law Department, the summary of the amendments. I had a couple of red flags with that summary that I need to correct. So just for those who don't know, Rank the Vote Ohio was founded to promote democracy, more fair elections, more democratic way of us selecting our leaders. So we have a stake in what happens in Cleveland Heights big time. We've been engaged, as I said, for two years, and I have to commend the Charter Review Commission. It's been a privilege for me, even coming in the past year, to be able to observe some of this process and the hard work that's gone on, not just from the Commission, but also with the city council folks. So do know that it's noted, and as a member of the public, very much appreciate it. I want to bring clarity. So in the summary, it talks about pending state legislation. Mr. Law Director, I'm not sure if you got this, but I gave the city council people a copy of the Legislative Service Commission analysis of the ban bill. The ban bill, which is SB 63, doesn't ban ranked choice voting, but says if you do it, we'll pull your money. It does not apply to ranked choice voting enacted through a charter amendment. That's a home rule issue. It clearly is stated in here with citations, and I gave this to all of you guys. So that, to me, is a species argument, and I would really love for it to kind of go away because it doesn't apply at this point in time. The other piece is that I kind of got my antenna up. There's been a lot of discussion, particularly from you, President Kuta, about putting municipal issues on a municipal ballot. Odd years. And to me, that makes perfect sense. So why is ranked choice voting broken out? Because that's very much a municipal issue. It has to do with home rule, how you hold your elections. If we don't want to do anything else with the amendments in an odd year, then why are we putting ranked choice voting out there at a time when you yourself have stated on the record is not ideal for these kind of decisions to be made? Councilman Cobb, I think yesterday you said, which I loved, about let's not leave this stuff hanging for the next council. You guys have been at this for a long time. You are in the best position to decide to put this on the ballot. If you leave ranked choice voting hanging out there, you're doing exactly the opposite of what you recommended, which is that this is a council that started it, this is a council body that needs to finish it. And finally, just because it takes time to implement ranked choice voting, the summary also speaks to, well, even if we did it in 2025, it wouldn't go into effect for a minimum of two years, maybe three years. That's all the more reason to do it now. You know, it's not going to change the timeline when you do it. Anything that you do, just like with the salary piece that's in the amendment, in the recommended amendments, that doesn't go into effect for years. So we can't look at, you know, if the issue is that some people here don't understand it, then we need to have conversations. Rank the Vote Ohio, our national partners are here. We're ready to do a campaign of education. We are ready. We will get the funding to do it. That's what we're here for, to partner with y'all to make it happen. We are here to help you if you need to help to craft the legislation. I put you in touch with our executive director. We're here, that's why we're here. That's why I get paid, and y'all don't want to see me not have a job, right? So please, you know, that getting it on the ballot sooner rather than later is more ideal. I agree with you, Councilman Cobb. Everything should be in this, this body. You're going to have at least, at a minimum, two new members next time. And so where does that leave whatever's left hanging out there? So thank you for letting me speak, and I'm going to give this to the, is that okay?
Of course.
Michael Steer. Did I get that right? I'm sorry if I, I apologize if I didn't.
No, that's right. Thank you. I apologize for writing illegibly. Yeah, so my name is Michael Steer. I live on Ren Rock Road. I'm here to speak solely regarding and as a proponent of ranked choice voting. I thank the body for the attention that you've given the issue and the general support that's come from this body. And as I'm sure you know, if we were to implement it, we would be the first municipality in the state to do so, which would make me incredibly proud. But as I've heard, we decided to pump the brakes on that for the two stated reasons. One, the potential two-year implementation period, and of course, the pending state legislation. So as Ms. Jackson mentioned, I don't think it makes any sense to cite a two-year implementation period as a reason to not do this immediately. I think that we should be urging expediency rather than hesitancy on it. And of course, the other issue, the legislation, which has not even passed yet, could potentially be unconstitutional, and as Ms. Jackson mentioned, would not even apply to Cleveland Heights in its current state, since it's a charter city. So again, thank you for giving it your attention, and I appreciate that you would like to see this go to the voters, and I just urge you not to delay. Thank you.
Carol Lee Upsher. Thank you, Carol Lee. Sorry.
I'm kind of new to this party, so, okay. My overall concern here is that I think you're, I think there is a counterbalance of power here, and I think that you're giving the council a little too much power and not enough to the people. So that's just my overall kind of impression of this. But on page two, I'm going to give the page numbers because it's quicker. On page two, when it talks about the council being the judge of the election and qualifications of its own members, may expel a member for gross misconduct, malfeasance, misfeasance, nonfeasance, and so on. I'm kind of concerned with this only, well, first of all, let me make one other overall statement. We've had a problem with the issue of the mayor, but I would encourage you not to have a knee-jerk reaction and start counterbalancing the power to the council to avoid having the problems that we've had with regard to the mayor in the future. Does that make sense? So you've had some issues, but I would encourage you to not let that affect your future. I mean, you want, you don't want to go too far the other direction, if you get my drift. When they talk about the council, they talk about the council filling the, filling the spots if someone drops out of council or someone's removed from council and whatnot. I think the people should have a say in who gets to replace a council member that's removed. Let's go to page 12. And on page 12, I had, I just had a couple of questions. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let's go to page five first. Clerk of the council or any other person appointed and employed, hired or engaged by the council, serve at the pleasure of the council, shall report to the president of the council, designee. When this talks about the process for the president of the council rather than the mayor, shall have the authority to execute any contracts authorized by the council pursuant to this section. The majority of city governments, and I've checked with other city councils on this, the majority, the mayor typically signs the contracts. Is that the case for Cleveland Heights? Okay, so the mayor typically signs the council, and then the council approves, is the one that approves the contracts.
The other way around, but yeah.
Okay, okay. So, all right. And then I wanted to find out, why has this one section been crossed, been taken out, except for the purpose of inquiry? The council and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the mayor or the city administrator, and neither the council nor any members thereof shall give orders to any of the subordinates of the mayor. Some of these, some of these things that have been taken out, I can kind of figure out what they were, but I would like to get some clarification on a couple of those. On page...
Go ahead.
On Section Six, yeah, this whole thing with Section Six, I was kind of wondering why these sections were thrown out. I don't have a clear understanding of why they were thrown out. I know you just had some discussion about that, but I'm still not sure I'm clear on what you're proposing instead of Section Six, based on the conversation today.
Sorry, which one is this?
This is on page 12, the Section Six. You just talked about judicial powers, removal, the mayor shall have all the judicial powers granted by the general laws of Ohio. Section Six. Okay, okay. Yeah, this is on judicial powers removal. Judicial powers at the top, it says Section Six, 82525, the working draft, page 12. I assume that's what you were talking about at the beginning of the meeting, because I wasn't quite clear on...
It was recommended by the municipal judge.
Yeah.
Right, but you're proposing that that be taken out. I just wasn't quite clear on, I wasn't quite clear on that. So if somebody could clarify some of that.
I would, I would ask Linda Strieffsky.
And this is my first reading of this.
Yeah, sure, no, that's fine.
The municipal judge came to our Charter Review Commission and recommended that that wasn't relevant for Cleveland Heights because we have a judge. Some cities don't have a judge. In that case, the mayor has a mayor's court. We don't have that.
Okay, all right. So I understand that a little bit better.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I know the public couldn't hear her answer. It would be helpful if they, if they could hear what was stated.
Thank you.
So the, our current municipal judge, Judge Costello, gave us input on this, and he pointed out that unlike some cities where there isn't a municipal judge, we do have a municipal court and a municipal judge. So the mayor doesn't typically have judicial powers. You may be familiar that some cities have a mayor's court. That's what this is referring to, so it's really not relevant to Cleveland Heights.
Okay. And then I'm going to be reading through this again, but this was my first reading through this. And it talks about the mayor being able to remove the director of any department without or subject, well, this says, subject to the approval of a majority of members of the elected or appointed to council. I'm just, I just would urge you to be cautious here because you, it, it looks as though we're giving a little bit more of the balance of power to the council, and the mayor still should have some executive authority. So I just want to make sure we don't usurp any of that executive authority with regard to this. I know we've had an issue that needed to be dealt with.
We changed that yesterday.
Okay.
To just the finance director and the law director.
Okay.
And that's, that's because council has the most interaction and authority with those two positions.
Okay. And then on page 32, with, where they talk about auditing finances, are we going to have an audit this year of our finances? Is there a discussion about that or any plan to have that? I would think that if you've had the mess that you've had and the uncertainty that you've had, that it might be good to start things clean. And, and I would really recommend that you think about doing that.
It has been suggested.
Okay.
Well, listen, thank you so much for your questions.
I think that was pretty much, yeah.
I'll try to, you know, in our comments, we'll try to cover that. Did you want to say something, Councilman Posh?
You know, it could wait till our comments.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we have, I don't know, how many more speakers?
Three.
Okay.
Marty Gelfand.
Hi, good evening, Marty Gelfand, Meadowbrook Boulevard. A lot of what I was going to say was already said by Lou Radivojevich, and a lot of it also was said by Drew Herzig about the timeline. What I will say about the timeline is, and this isn't to point fingers at anybody, it is what it is, but, I mean, council has had the recommendations for several months, and to come to the public a week before you have to have this passed, or two weeks before you have to have this to the Board of Elections and say, here's the first reading, now we're going to have some meetings. It kind of rushes things for us, and it just, I know there were public meetings before, but now it's in council's hand. Council isn't here to rubber stamp anybody. I've said before, council isn't here to rubber stamp the mayor, and I'm saying now, council isn't here to rubber stamp the Charter Review Commission. This is something that should be deliberate, and you should take all the time you need to do this, and don't put the cart before the horse. If there's a mayor, if there's an election in September or, excuse me, November, that's, you know, that's, I think, extraneous to thinking about something as important as the city charter. I would consider, I was on the Charter Review Commission... I would consider, I was on the Charter Review Commission, and I was an elected member, that's how, in South Euclid, they elect their Charter Review members. And in South Euclid, what we did was, we took all the different changes that we wanted to see to the charter, and we presented them as separate issues to be brought to the attention of the voters. So someone could say, I support, you know, one thing, and I don't support something else, and they can vote that way. So for you, presenting changes to the charter, the whole thing wouldn't get killed because there were a couple of unpopular issues. So consider making them separate issues. I would caution against making it easier to get on the ballot. I think that there's a lot to be said for making a concerted effort to get people to sign your petition and to, you know, to get out there amongst the public. So the one change I would say is that I do like the part about not limiting, you know, that someone could sign more than one petition, because the First Amendment gives the people the power to petition their government for a redress of grievance. So to say that somebody can't sign a petition on something, I think, is probably unconstitutional. With respect to the removal of a council member, I think I would agree with Lenny Friedson that what's there now is good. Don't confuse things by adding misfeasance and non-feasance. Probably people know what malfeasance means, but, you know, I think you're confusing the issue. And then finally, let me just say this, and full disclosure, I'm running for mayor. I'm not saying this because I think that you might try to remove me if I get elected, but I don't think that council should have the power to remove a mayor. I think that that should be, you know, they're two different branches of government, keep them separate. Oh, and as far as contacting officials with the city, I think council should always be able to contact department heads and chiefs, but you have some other language, administrative officers. I'm not sure what that means. If you mean administrator, say administrator. If you mean something else, say what you mean, but I don't think council should be in the business of going up to city workers if they're not heads of their departments and telling them, or asking them questions, or, you know, putting them in uncomfortable positions. So keep it specific.
Harriet Applegate.
Harriet Applegate, 1522 Crest Road. Given the fact that the Charter Review Commission recommended ranked choice voting, and that you all also concurred and voted to put ranked choice voting on the ballot, and the only reason that is not there is that Law Director, in his review, recommended that you delete that, and you kind of went along with that, given that there's a short time between now and November. And I previously testified that it seems like a short time for everything. And so I was going to say, I was originally going to say, ask you for a commitment, given that two bodies yourselves and the Charter Review Commission has proposed ranked choice voting, that you make some sort of actual commitment for making sure that you put ranked choice voting on the ballot, some ballot sometime in the near, you know, within the year, let's say, or within at least either the primary ballot in the spring or the general election ballot, and absolutely no later than that. However, if in fact you end up deciding to put ranked choice voting on this November, that would be great. I will say this, and this is really addressed to President Kuta. In my experience in politics, which goes back many years, I see the three kinds of voters. One kind votes only in presidential elections. That's it. Those are the older people who go back to FDR, and, you know, we vote every presidential election. That's a lot of people that just vote in presidential. Another group votes in November, you know, general elections, you know, mid-year, you know, in between the presidentials. And then the third group is the super-engaged voter who never misses any election, primary or whatever. I don't see the electorate divided into municipal election voters and non-municipal election voters. So I would argue that a municipal election voter probably relatively closely resembles a primary election voter. That is, they're pretty engaged voters. I mean, I don't discriminate among elections. I vote in all elections, and I think there's a lot of people, I'm sure all of you, vote in every election. So I would say that the distinction between municipal voter, municipal election voters and primary election voters isn't as enormous as you might, as we all might think, or as you might think. And I don't know how we test that, because it's not a question of numbers as much as who the voters are. But anyway, I would just make that comment. It wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if ranked choice voting went on the ballot in the primary, next year's primary. It wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if the Charter, all the provisions went on the primary ballot either. So, thank you.
This is the last one.
Oh, sure.
Khalil Saran.
Thank you, Khalil Saran. So I am a resident, probably with a pretty unique perspective on these things, but I did want to preface my comments with just a brief, shared understanding that I believe wholeheartedly that the people of Cleveland Heights get to choose the type of government that they want to be governed by. But I also want to recognize that through this process, the council has a great deal of latitude and authority to determine, just from a factual basis, how many people in Cleveland Heights are likely to participate in this decision-making process. And just my personal opinion, my personal perspective, when it comes to making changes that are this dramatic and this foundational, is that you want to maximize the number of people that will ultimately be impacted by the decisions that we're collectively making. You want to maximize that number of people who are involved in the decision itself. And we know just from a basic understanding of the stats on elections that even-year elections garner, and general elections garner, the most voter turnout and the most interest. And I think that it's important to maximize the number of people in Cleveland Heights, whether or not they are very knowledgeable or very plugged in to municipal function or other municipal electoral politics. I think it's important to try to attract as many people as possible into this discussion and the decision. With that said, I do believe that, as Mr. Radovoyevich mentioned, that it is important to have the courtesy of the new mayor, to allow that new mayor a bit of time in the office, to experience what it is like to be in the office, in order to get that person's perspective on some of these changes as well, because it will impact the position that they are currently running for. And so I think it'll be important to get their perspective on this with a little bit of time on the job to recognize how the impact will be felt. But stepping back a little bit, I think that there's been something missed as we're talking about individual changes, and that is a more philosophical, underlying understanding of what these roles are intended to be. When we think about a mayor, for instance, in some places, we think about that person as being the leader of the government. Not preeminent as in they get to decide unilaterally every single thing, but the leader of the government, they campaign on a vision for the city. The city looks at that person as the person who is tasked with implementing that vision. And I want to point out that some of these changes, and frankly, the way that the charter is written right now, there is a great deal of room for inhibiting the mayor's execution of that vision that they were elected to implement. And so I want to caution this council to take a look at those foundational issues, and the people as well, to take a look at what we want these positions to actually be, and then focus on the changes that need to happen in order to get there. Thank you.
That's everybody.
All right.
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
I'm in the car on the road, but if it's all right, if I say a couple of things, if not, I can try to hold out.
Yeah, I mean, we're headed to old business here. That's the next thing on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to state that I 100% agree with Mr. Radovoyevich, every single thing that he stated. I know that the council is looking to make a move on Tuesday. However, one of the things that I just wanted to say in talking to community members and some organizations in the city, we have quite a few organizations willing to help us do some engagement around the community, not just engagement at City Hall or the community center, but in pockets, much like we did with ARPA. And I'm more than willing to help work with that and work with any member of council to make that happen. I know Councilwoman Russell and I have been in conversations about what that engagement might look like, even if it's in some type of form, like she did, you talk, I listen. But I think it's important that we not just get the information out about the proposed changes, but also have the conversation about what our residents really want the community to look like. And so if council is willing to pause or slow this down, I think there is a way that we can do robust community engagement in our communities to make sure that we're getting to a diverse population all over, much again like we did with the mayor, the administration at ARPA. I think to really, really get some answers for the public and hear their heart on this issue as well. I also think that it's important, if we do that, to really break these things up and even add ranked choice voting to that, if that's what we want to do. I don't think we should separate that out. I think we're at a place where the community is shaky in terms of trust, and so let's do what we can in terms of transparency and engagement. But I'm really open to doing that if anyone else is. I have quite a couple of concerns about the charter myself, but if we can really get back out to the community, I think it would be extremely helpful. So anything we can do to do community engagement deeper in our neighborhoods, even working back again with the schools like we did with ARPA, I think it's critical that we go that route, not just to get out what the suggested changes are, but to also hear back from the public in a deeper way. I think we need a more diverse population and much more feedback, and spend a longer time to make sure that they, again, can digest this. And so I just wanted to state that while I'm on the road here, that I'm more than open and willing to work with any member of council to do that. I think that if we approach this much like we did with ARPA, we'll at least get the voice of the people on every side of town, give them an opportunity to really hear this and get that feedback that we want for these changes that, like I said to many online, are going to impact us for decades. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right. Any other, I mean, anything falling under old business? Which could be this. I mean, because we've been discussing...
Are we still talking about the charter?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I would like us to consider the changes that Lynn Friedson has recommended. So we've already implemented a couple of them.
Then in that case, why don't we take them on one by one?
Uh huh.
I mean, do you want to lead that part of the discussion?
I'm happy to do that.
All right, good, thank you.
As soon as I get my sign on back on. We've taken care of Article III, Section III, removal of a council member. We've taken care of Article IV, Section VI, removal, and that section regarded the mayor. The next one would be Article V, Section I, departments. I can't hear you. Thank you.
When you say that you've taken care of Article III, Section III, there was earlier conversation about removing the reference to council rules, of persistent failure to abide by council rules. And council was on board, it appeared, with removing that language from the language that appears in the draft. Mr. Friedson made a different suggestion, and I didn't recall council indicating its opinion on that one way or the other, and I just want to make sure I know what changes we would be making.
Can you, I know, I understand the question you're asking. Can you clarify the difference between the original version and the version that we, for lack of a better term, just amended?
Sure. So the changes to the language that's been there previously are to add, and I'll just read it, and then I'll tell you what words are new. The council shall be the judge of the election and qualifications of its own members. It may expel any member for gross misconduct or malfeasance. New is misfeasance or non-feasance. In, and then this is existing, in or disqualification for office or for a conviction of, new is felony or already existing was a crime involving moral turpitude while in office or violation of the charter. And then the new language is while a council member elects, so it's conviction of a crime in office or after election before taking office. So if somebody's elected in November, they're convicted of a felony in December, this would apply in that case under this new language. Provided, however, that the expulsion shall not take place without the concurrence of, it said five, now it says three-fourths of the remaining members of council, nor until the accused member shall have been given a written copy of the charges against the member and an opportunity to be heard. Added, new is present evidence and examine under oath all witnesses appearing in support of the charge or charges, with not less than 10 days' written notice of the date and time of, of the time and place of hearing. And then the new, the last new language is the accused member shall not vote on the question of removal. So those are the changes. And in the 828 working draft red line, that's on pages two and three.
Got it.
Okay, it would be my understanding that, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about in Section III, removal of a council member, returning to what the charter says now, and also removing the wording...
Mr. Friedson talked about that. Yeah, that's what Lynn Friedson talked about.
And removing or persistent failure to abide by the rules of the council, which Mr. Friedson didn't recommend, but we did, it seems like we had consensus on that.
Right.
So that section will pretty much look the same as it is in the current charter, except for removing that group of words.
You just have to tell me what you want to do.
Yeah, so the question, the question I think that's on the floor is, would we rather have the language as amended, that we amended earlier by taking out the part about council rules, or do we want to keep the exact language that was in the charter for the last, I don't know, 53 years, whatever?
I'll yield to my colleague.
Mr. President, and going back to my original point, when we started this, I think it's problematic from the beginning, and I think we have an opportunity to change that, it still puts any future council or the current council at risk of being able to shift things through those rules. I think removing that language removes that risk, and I'm not alone with that. Our residents are really concerned about council's ability to switch and change those things, and I think we have an opportunity...
Councilman, I think we settled that. I think that's completely settled.
It sounded to me like we were re-discussing it again. I thought you just asked...
No, 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 we're not, we're not re-discussing that part. What we're doing is, we're talking about whether or not we want to go with the amended, taking the council rules part out, which we all agreed on. I think we have seven people that agreed to that. But now we're talking about keeping the original language that's in the charter now and not the language that Law Director just read, which has some additions. And I just want to ask Lynn Dostrowski, did you want to speak to that? Because I saw you put your...
I wanted to ask a point of clarification on removal as to the mayor, because right now, there is a removal provision in the charter that provides that under certain limited circumstances, the mayor may forfeit the office. And if you're not going to put the new removal of the mayor in, I'm asking whether you're going to keep the one that's currently in the charter.
I think that's a good question, but...
Yeah, let's not address that now, but let's keep that.
So, Mr. President, I would also point out that removed through charter, excuse me, through council's discussion of Article III, Section III, which is the removal of a council member, already was violation of the charter, because it was felt that that was too loose, and again, could be sort of a problem of the same type that Councilwoman Maddox described. Right. So you have in front of you right now, language that was modified through the discussions of council and the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission, and then with the additional change agreed upon earlier to remove the reference to persistent failure to abide by the rules of the council. And so then, I think if you're going to make these changes, and Mr. Friedson didn't explain why he wanted to just revert back, but, you know, one of the changes is, do you want to, is there a problem with adding conviction of a felony as a basis for removal? And is it a problem that you don't want somebody who's convicted of a felony or a crime involving moral turpitude after election before taking office to be subject to removal?
And that's in the original?
That's in the new.
Oh, in the new.
That's what I'm asking. So these are the changes that are there. And then there's also additional process protection for the councilperson, such as presenting evidence, examining under oath, all witnesses appearing in support of the charge against them, and so forth. So all I'm suggesting is, rather than... So all I'm suggesting is, rather than just saying, let's revert back, I think since you worked through this previously in different stages, these are not meaningless changes and it's worth looking at.
Yes.
You want to take a temperature check?
Sure. You ready? I'm putting the thermometer in your mouth. Go ahead. Well, go ahead, Councilman.
I support removing what we already discussed, quote, "or persistent failure to abide by the rules of council," which, as you noted, all seven of us agreed to. Otherwise, I support the red line version.
All right. Others? That's what he's saying.
Yeah. You asked any other discussion, I said.
Okay, got it.
Going with what we had already discussed.
I think we need to go with what we already discussed. I mean, it does have so many, it closes so many loopholes already.
Yep.
And it doesn't give anybody any more power, it just provides clarification.
That's the way I see it.
And protections.
Councilman Cobb?
I'm in agreement with everyone else.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I think we have agreement there. Councilman Maddox?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we got, we have that settled. What was the next one, Councilwoman?
And this would address Lynda Strajewski's concern about the removal of the mayor. It's Article 4, Section 6.
On that one, council had, had agreed that that new Section 6 language should be removed.
Correct.
I don't see anyone changing their mind. Then the question that Mr. Strajewski asked was, there was a prior provision on forfeiture of office.
And that's not redlined out?
It is redlined out now. And the question is, if you're taking out the new Section 6, did council want to reinsert that provision, which was inserted through the adoption of Issue 26 in 2019? That language says, "If at any time the mayor shall cease to be qualified for the office," that's something like moving out of the city, "or shall be convicted of a felony, or shall be declared legally incompetent, the mayor shall immediately forfeit office."
That is page 12 of the...
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Mr. President, I apologize, I'm going to drop off here.
Okay, thank you so much for attending. I know tonight's a big night. Yeah, I definitely see how that could be a problem with not having anything there in these particular cases. I know that residency has come up in, for, for some elected offices and had been disputed. And I wouldn't want to, like, not have anything there. I mean, there's more than that. But I certainly want to listen to, Paul, go ahead.
Question on, on this. Under the current charter, the removal occurs if they're convicted of a felony. In the city council removal provision that we looked at earlier, it provides for conviction of a felony or a crime involving moral turpitude. Why would there be at this different standard for removal? I mean, I'm just tossing that out there. It seems to me it ought to be the same standard for removal of a mayor and a council member if you're convicted of a crime involving moral turpitude.
I, I understand your point, and this is a time difference. The Section 9 currently, which is struck, the one that I just read, is on forfeiture, and that's current language that the Issue 26 folks, the Committee for the Elected Mayor, put in. The, the language that was struck is different than that. And I think that the question that Mr. Strajewski was asking is, if you're taking that out, did council want to consider reinserting that previously, the currently existing language?
Yeah, well, I, we, we need, if we're going to take out what's in the proposed charter, then we need to revert to the prior removal provision.
With, I'm sorry, you want to add moral turpitude to the...
No, I'm just tossing that out there as to why that's not a basis for removal, whereas the basis for removal of a council.
Well, the, the proposed new Section 6 is, is broader and more detailed in general. Crime of moral turpitude, and it says felony or crime involving moral turpitude, basically means things like dishonesty, you know, theft, not, not just, obviously, a traffic problem or, or some other sort of, you know, crime that doesn't, doesn't involve, quote unquote, "bad motive" and things of that nature. But I think at this point, given council's unanimity, I think, on removing the new Section 6, maybe at this late date, the easiest thing to do is just to go back to the prior section. It's never a problem in anyone's experience, to my knowledge. It's just there as a, as a backstop in case somebody moves out of town or something like that.
I would agree. I mean, but certainly want to hear from everybody.
I would agree.
The, the red line language?
I generally support including that if we're going to remove the proposed removal clause, but I think that there's an outstanding question about moral turpitude and making sure that they're in alignment.
I'm a little concerned about the nebulous nature of that.
I think that's a legitimate concern in, in the law, so to speak.
Yeah.
Moral turpitude is not a term that's defined in the Ohio revise.
I mean, I don't want to fool around with, I mean, this me, I don't want to fool around. But I'm fine with the language that's crossed out here. I mean, we kind of need everybody to weigh in on all this.
Yeah, I mean, if this is an issue of concern, I would just go back to the red line version.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's where this is going, so.
Any objections? All right, so we're, we're good there. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Article 5, Section 1, departments. Mr. Freedson says, "Remove all the currently proposed changes in this section until a future election and revert to the prior language."
I'm sorry, which one?
Article 5, Section 1. Directors.
Did you say Section 1?
That's what Mr. Freedson has on here.
Okay. So I think we, we discussed...
Oh, and, excuse me, and 2 is the next line.
Okay, well, let's start with 1. I definitely want the Department of Human Resources added. I think we, I think we were unanimous on that. You were not? Tell me. No, 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 you're, you're, we're talking about two different things. I'm talking, we do not have a department, we do not have a director. Yes, yeah, okay. Right, that's right. Section 1. Yeah, there's, there's nothing. Okay, I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
I would like to see Department of Human Resources added, to have that left in there.
But I mean, I think the main point is, do we want to keep Section 1 as it is? Or, because, I'm just going to say I do. I do. So I'll just leave it at that, and then just hear from everybody else.
When you're looking at paragraph 2, President Kuta?
I'm looking at every paragraph in this.
Okay.
Well, there's really two paragraphs, and then the last sentence is, "The mayor shall serve as director of the Department of Public Safety." That's, that's not new, that's just, that's, that's always been the case, although before it was the city manager. I can't think of a city that doesn't have the mayor as director of public safety. Anybody else want to remove the red lines from?
Councilman Posh.
Councilman Posh? From Article 5, Section 1?
I, I think it should stay the way it is. I mean, stay as amended. You know, the powers here that council have, I mean, we have power in the budget, which is what's used to fund the various departments. I mean, if there's concern, we're not going to be working with the mayor, then we alter the, the second paragraph, the top of the second paragraph, that says, "The mayor or council shall by ordinance determine and prescribe the functions and duties of each department." So, I mean, by ordinance, it's something council's voting on, but striking out the mayor could be perceived as we're trying to take power away from the mayor. I'm, I don't think that's the intent here. I, I would say that we just, we unstrike the word mayor in the second paragraph and we add the word, "Mayor and council shall by ordinance determine."
Mr. President? Let me just, let me just hear from everybody first. Others? Mr. Freedson, you wanted to say something?
Certainly, I will address this issue, but I do want to make a comment about all the things that I suggested were to be either removed or reverted, was because they were controversial, that they, not because that they had good or bad, they were controversial. And I would encourage this council to be sensitive to people's perceptions of what's going on. It's controversial, number one. With regard to the council's ability to remove, whether you do agree in future to have that go forward or not, wasn't my issue. The issue is that it's controversial today, and we don't want to have to fix it in five minutes or try to fix these little things when it's not a big issue. Remove it, because it doesn't, it's not that important right now. We're not here to fix the charter forever. This is not the goal, right? We want to fix the things that are easy to fix and not controversial. So with regard to this issue about the council by ordinance determine, or the mayor, this whole, the way that this has been redlined implies that the mayor has no input into this process at all. That's the implication, and if the intent is different, it should be really clear that that intent is different. This is about my concern about authority. Who's got the authority to organize the administration? Who's got the authority? And we're not prepared tonight to solve that problem. I'm telling you, we're not. Not in order to get something on the ballot in November. We need time to address the issues of authority, and they deserve to be addressed. That's all I need to say about this, but these little issues, by removing them, just allows us to go forward with something that's not, not so controversial in November.
Okay, I, I'm going to call Lynda Strajewski up.
Mr. President.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, when you're saying that, that it's not controversial, I, I mean, even that's a controversial statement, because it's in a lot of charters, but...
Say again what you just said?
Yeah, the, this clause is in a lot of charters.
This clause?
Yes.
There's, there's two ones we're talking about, the mayor or the...
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, labeling it controversial.
Which clause?
The, the part you just, I'm literally talking about what you just said.
So there are two different things there.
Right, I'm talking about the second paragraph.
The second paragraph.
Yeah.
So the question, the, the reading of this is what I'm concerned about. Whether it's in other kinds of, it's not an issue, it's about perception.
All right, Lynda, you can come up.
I just want to point out that this is one of the many places in the charter where, because of the single-issue rule, the ballot proposal made by the Committee for an Elected Mayor simply did word changes. This charter used to say the city manager made these decisions. And they did a word search, and they changed city manager and a mayor in a whole bunch of places. And we discussed this at length in the Charter Review Commission, and our recommendation was that this was a decision that should be made by council. So that's, that's just the backdrop to why we recommended it that way.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd just like to correct Ms. Strajewski, it was not actually a phrase that included the city manager. The original version of this clause indicated that the council determined the shape of the government. This is near universal, that the legislative body crafts the structure of the government. And when the Issue 26 campaign proposed the change that created the elected mayor position, they changed city council.
That's right.
To mayor in that clause, which I recommended to the Charter Review Commission in my set of recommendations, that that be reverted to include the council. Now, I, I believe that there is risk, political risk, or rather, risk of political, you know, interests influencing how a council proceeds with structuring the government. And to that end, this, the sort of compromise suggestion that I made was that because the mayor has a very direct interest in the shape of the government and probably a perspective that is more informed about the operational needs of the government relative to the shape and structure of that government, that the mayor be authorized to introduce changes, but not to be able to implement them unilaterally, as is the case right now. Right now, I currently have the authority by executive order or what have you to restructure all of the departments, change them, combine them, abolish them, so on and so forth. That was the change that Issue 26 made. I don't think that that is the most appropriate way to structure a government. I think that the legislative body needs to be involved in that decision-making process. In this case, and the suggestion that I made, is that the mayor be authorized to introduce those things, and the council wouldn't be able to initiate those changes on its own, but the council would be required to approve the changes that the mayor would initiate. That's not the only way to do it. I thought that that would be an interesting way for the legislative and the administrative branches to, to collaborate on those sorts of discussions and decisions. But to be honest, if it is just a binary choice between the mayor, unilaterally structuring the government, abolishing, combining, creating departments, if it's a choice between the mayor having that unilateral decision-making authority and the council having that decision-making authority, I think it is most appropriate for the council to be given back that authority that was taken away by Issue 26. So that, that's the piece that I wanted to, to, to express. I know that perception nowadays, and this is one of the reasons why I hope that these sorts of discussions can wait until after we're focused on municipal elections, perception during this kind of, in, in this kind of environment can trump reality. It does it often, it's been doing it all year. But in this case, I know that the perception might be that this is a controversial change, but frankly, even from my perspective as the current mayor, I don't believe that it is controversial at all to have this authority reside with the legislative body as it is in virtually every single institution in our country.
And it does at the federal level, and I thank you for that. That was, I think that this is quite an esoteric little part of the charter. Law Director wanted to...
Just wanted to mention that the mayor is correct about the change that was made in 2019.
Yes.
And also that it's, it's, it's very difficult to find an example of a charter provision that gives a mayor that authority. It's much more common and almost universal, as the mayor said, that the council has it. So I, again, as said, I don't know why that would be controversial.
Yeah. And frankly, when it comes to government... Yeah, and frankly, when it comes to governance, you, yeah, but that's the thing. Anyway, Len, you wanted to say something? Did he fill out a, did you fill out a?
I have a request from Harriet Applegate to speak.
Oh, it was Harriet. I'm sorry. I knew somebody put a something in the box.
I want to respectfully disagree with my friend Len. Nine people spent hundreds and hundreds of hours going through every word of the charter. And I think too, and one of the reflections on the previous Charter Review Commission was they changed, you know, they changed a lot of language, and, I mean, a lot, they modernized language, but they did some substantive things, but it wasn't overloaded with substantive changes. So we've got, this Charter Review Commission, this recently disbanded Charter Review Commission, you know, thought deeply and long and talked about a lot of these things. And I would hate to see, you know, I'd rather see it at a later election than have a diluted, essentially meaningless charter with changes that everybody can agree with, so it passes in November. I mean, you know, because something is controversial, it's not a good reason to not put it in a charter, really. I mean, you want a good charter that addresses the needs of the electorate. And just taking out anything controversial and making it bland, so it, you know, doesn't, yeah.
I do understand what you're saying. Go ahead.
I request that we take a temperature check on this so that we can continue to make progress.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. You want to start?
I support keeping the redlined language.
I support keeping it.
Same here.
Keeping it? Go ahead.
I am just totally just in dismay right now, because we are changing things periodically, just one step at a time, at a time. I mean, the law director is reading it off. We don't have it written in front of us. No, no. That's not what I just said. Maybe I wasn't clear. I know he was, he was, he was reading some things, and those are not put in front of me. That's what I'm saying. Some of the corrections and things we've been talking about. Do we not, am I clear now, or no?
There's a lot of red lines. I think the last thing I read was the red, from the red line on Article 3, Section 3, but yeah.
Right, and what we're gonna take out, what we're gonna add. It's getting late, and I don't know how much further we're gonna go with this, piece by piece by piece.
I'm here to do what we need to do. But how are you on leaving the language on Article 5, Section 1? That's what's in front of us now.
I will remove it.
Okay.
I think it needs to stay the same.
Okay, so we have five for leaving it and one for removing it. So, I guess that's...
Mr. Friesen has two more, and I didn't...
Yeah, go ahead.
The next one is Article 5, Section 2, Directors, on page 15.
Right. Now, just to reiterate from yesterday, we, we had a consensus that only the removal of the Finance Director and the Law Director would be subject to council approval. So that's where we are right now. I hope everybody heard that.
I still support that position from yesterday.
I support retaining the last sentence of that paragraph that we're discussing, putting it back to what it was. That removes the Director of Law or the Director of Finance as the two entities, but that's my position.
Yes, that's what, that's what, that's what we're talking about right now.
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
All right, so we're talking about the current redline version. Is that correct?
Right, that just, that just gives council approval of...
Finance and Director of Law.
Correct.
I am fine with that. That's the current situation right now.
Same here. Okay, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just as a very brief commentary on this, I recognize that, again, it is council's authority to prioritize and have a particular interest. And each council member independently will make the determination is empowered to do so, to place these things on the ballot. And of course, the people will determine for themselves what they support and what they don't. With that said, going back to the comments I made earlier, I would like to reiterate, I think, the hope that people keep in mind the underlying purpose of each of these positions. And the mayor position in particular, I think, is something that the city needs to determine what it wants that to be. And I say that because I recognize the possibility, and I've seen it happen in here, but also in other jurisdictions, where the person who is elected to, again, ostensibly lead the city, lead the administration, can very easily be undermined.
Can I just say this? I think these philosophical questions are very important. I just don't want to do that right this minute. But I think there's gonna be a time for all of us to address that topic. I certainly, I certainly intend to.
Do you mind if I finish up one sentence, basically?
Of course.
Okay, and when I say undermined, what I, what I mean is that some, a change like this could reasonably, at some future point, have the impact of allowing a Finance Director or a Law Director in this particular circumstance to simply keep four council members relatively happy, even if they are antagonistic to the vision and plan of a mayor, and inhibit what the voters elected that mayor to do as long as those four council members are happy. And that is a concern, because if we do want progress in the city, having people sort of internally inhibiting that progress can be problematic.
All right, and it was one more?
Article 8, Section 3, Recall. And that starts on page 22. And he asks us to look at Paragraph 2.
I'm sorry, Article 8, Section 3?
Article 8, Section 3.
Yes.
Entitled Recall. Mr. Friesen asks us to look at Paragraph 2, which starts with a petition demanding. He's suggesting, and you might want to step to the microphone and explain this, that we should be distinguishing between the mayor and a council member specifying, no, all right, specifying the previous petition requirements of 25% for the mayor and 15% for a council member, rather than the changes that were made.
Yeah, okay, so this was changed, am I right? This was changed from 25% to 15%? Yeah, I can tell you this was on my list, that now I only have one thing left.
Great.
That was the only one I had left that I wanted to change. So I think I'm with you on this one, because I think it should be difficult to remove a mayor, and I don't think that there's, I don't see any reason to reduce the number. And 25 to 15% is a, that is a significant change. And, you know, I'm certainly willing to hear, you know, any arguments about that, but I'm, from the time I saw it, I was never for this. So I'm just saying that. But, want to start here this time?
I think it needs to be a high bar. I mean, I'm okay increasing it.
I think the 25%, I want to say it was 3,800 valid signatures? It was 2,900?
Based on the report from the Charter Review Commission, they said that 25% would equate to, based on the previous election, 4,274 signatures.
Yeah, you gotta come to the mic.
Talking about validated signatures?
My understanding is, for the current recall, the Board of Elections indicated they needed a little bit short of 3,000. The number in our report was incorrect. I just realized that last week, because we used the 2023 ballot count, which was not correct, because for the mayoral recall, you go back to the prior mayoral election, which would have been the 2021 ballot count.
That's right.
Okay. I think I know what it was. I think for this recall, there were 3,800 ballot signatures, but that wasn't the requirement. That was just the total. So, I mean, I could just, I walked in with, with, with the intention of suggesting that we keep the 25%. We had...
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Councilman Cobb?
I agree. Should be higher.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just another thing for both the council and the members of the public to note is that one of the major problems with the recall provisions in the current charter is the discrepancy between the recall provision for council currently and the recall provision for the mayor currently. The current language in the charter requires, I think it might be 25% of the total registered voters, not the total votes cast in the previous election, but the total registered voters, which is a dramatically higher number for council members than it is for the mayor. And so, equalizing that, I think this amendment does effectively. It, you know, combines these recall provisions, so it provides for the same level for one as it does for the other, which is the primary concern that I had when I was discussing this with the Charter Review Commission.
Yeah, the current charter, in several cases where voting levels are determined, uses registered voters, and the High Supreme Court has determined that that's inappropriate. It's too confusing, because that changes every day. So you have to instead use people who voted in a prior particular election, and different sections specify different points for that. As I said, for the mayor, it's the prior mayoral election, and for things like referendum initiative, it's the prior municipal election.
All right, thank you. And?
No, we, do we have consensus, or?
I think we do, yeah.
The last thing that Mr. Friesen has on here is note that if we make any changes, that we remove any other language necessary in other parts of the charter to be consistent with the previous removals above as needed. So I guess that's on the Law Department. That's it, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Not sorry.
And that concluded my concerns as well. Go ahead.
Can I make a statement?
Of course. Well, I mean, so we're, just so you know, we're on old business. We're coming up to council comments in a moment.
This is about this specifically.
Yeah, oh yeah, keep going.
So, there was a situation in Shaker where they were talking about their building, their buildings, and they made what was, the perception was there's a lot of controversy in some of these decisions and how it was going down, even though the board and many of the people that were part of the process, you know, good people, really had a very good handle on what was going on, but it was all about the perception. And we saw the community come out, is they basically wanted a pause. It's like, pause this for now. We can't digest this decision right now. And I'm of the state of mind right now that, you know, I think if we put something like this in the ballot, you know, I tend to think I've got a good radar where I think I could read the room, and I'm pretty sure something like this would pass at the ballot box. I mean, when people really dug into it, because there's a lot of really good people, put a lot of really good work effort into this document, and it was done over a lengthy amount of time. But we've, because there have been such a delay between the work of the Charter Review Commission and these meetings that we've had, now that we've got the final work, I'm just really afraid that this is just not the best time in the world to put this on the ballot and wait until the spring. And I'm torn, honestly, okay? Because we want to do our part. These, these changes in the charter are really necessary, in my opinion. And I think we did a really good job trying to get it done. Now, I'm not gonna break my arm to pat myself on the back and everybody on the back. I mean, we'll see if it passes and let the, and let the people decide that. But I almost think that we need to, just as, just sort of an extra... Okay, so in my opinion, we haven't seen a lot of transparency over the last couple of years. And I'm afraid that the public is worried that, I mean, this was not cooked up in a, in a living room and just thrown out to benefit council. This was, you know, put out with lots of people. A lot of people were involved in this, again, good people. And it just wasn't cooked, cooked up. I almost think we need to take this work product, give it back to the Charter Review Commission so that they can digest it. Give us another recommendation based on these, these changes, and then it needs to go on the ballot. And I know we're gonna miss the September. Regrettably, we're gonna remiss, remiss what I think is an important timeframe in September. That's, that's, that's my feeling.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've heard members of the Charter Review Commission say that they, you know, they, they, they're not gonna let the perfect be the enemy of the good. They feel like we've made a few tweaks. I don't think anybody is gonna be 100%. I mean, and I mean literally anybody.
I'm sorry. Mr. President, just a point of clarification. The Charter Review Commission does not exist.
Does not exist, yeah. And, I mean, I think that's an important point, too, but any other comments from council, I mean, on this particular issue? Any other issues in the charter that we need to go over?
Verifications?
Yes.
Not specific issues, but I'm concerned that we get each, get an opportunity to make a statement.
Oh, no, we're gonna do that. We're gonna do that. I just, I just didn't want to skip over any line items in here that anybody wanted to go over.
Would be one point that I heard about today.
Okay.
Law Director Hannah? Law Director Hannah, if we do approve this evening to move forward, I've been asked to ask the Law Department to proof the final version for spelling errors, typos, and incomplete sentences.
It's outside my wheelhouse.
Do you have a paralegal?
I'm gonna enlist some volunteers, of course, of course.
Thank you very much.
All right. If there are no other line items, we'll go on to new business. Seeing no new business, oh, if you want to speak, you can just come up and speak. I'll just... Oh, yes, I did, I did. Yes, ma'am.
And many, some of us, it's almost a 50-50, this side of the room, that side of the room. We brought up concerns, and you said they will be addressed during the comment period.
We haven't done, we haven't got, just so you know, we haven't gotten to council comments yet.
Okay, well, I know we got, we got 11 minutes left.
Okay.
And we had a lot of, I don't know what you officially call it, but the former review committee came up repeatedly, got answers while they were still asking questions. We spent maybe 20 minutes going over that. But I asked one question, it hasn't been answered, and you said we're gonna review it during the comment period.
Just remind me what that was.
Cheryl Dean Davis.
Oh, not your name, well, yours.
And it was, I just asked, why is it important to make the changes now instead of after the 2025 general election? And do the current council members have the qualifications? And I don't mean this in a derogatory manner or disrespectful. Do they have the qualifications, expertise, and experience to govern, to govern the authority roles proposed in ordinance 169, 2025? And it just seemed like everybody, some people had the opportunity to go over their three-minute limit, to just walk up and talk almost at will, you know, after it was over. And others, you know, are we just like, you know, placeholders in a chair, holding the seat down? It just seemed like our comments, you know, we were able to voice it, and you listened to us, but we got no feedback.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to give you feedback. Go ahead.
One of your comments was about the audit. And I was thinking about pausing, and I never got to the audit. And I was thinking about pausing, and I never got to the audit piece. We are required by law to have an audit.
Oh, I didn't mention anything about an audit.
Oh, I thought forensic audit—I thought that was part of your session. Okay, well, I wrote that down. If you don't have—if you don't have any questions about the reasons for an audit, then I'm just going to—okay.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Because I'll certainly—
Weigh in generally on this?
No, on your questions.
I'm sorry. I didn't write the questions down.
Yes.
Mr. Kuta, can you answer those questions? Because they are pretty pertinent to your perception of the ability of this council to handle this process.
Sure. So I think it's very important to do this. We've gone six—so 2019 was the election that we switched from—where we voted, to switch from a city manager form of government to a elected mayor form of government. We're six years into this now. We know what it was like to—with—and I don't think this is arguable—with a charter that was not—our charter was antiquated for a—for a city manager form of government. It had not been updated in, I believe, 40 years at that time. Now we have a new form of government, and I want to repeat what I said in the beginning because it was very important. The single-subject rule only allowed one change in the charter, and that was we were replacing a city manager with an elected mayor. The rest of the charter, which needed a lot of attention, got no attention. Now, I said this yesterday, I'm going to repeat it because I think it's relevant to your question. There was—we studied some municipalities that did the same thing we did, switched from city manager to elected mayor. One of them that we actually had quite a long—as this was during COVID—we had quite a long, lengthy Zoom meeting with—they did 27 amendments to their charter before the mayor was elected. Now, keep in mind, from 2019 to 2021, that was just an interim period. We were kind of a lame duck period for the city manager. So we've witnessed what it's like to have four years, almost four years, of this form of government without guardrails, without the council being empowered to do our job. I've been—I've actually been over—I mean, not with you, but I've—I've talked about this extensively over the last four years. To have co-equal branches of government, you have to have both branches of government fully empowered to do their job. I've made the argument over and over again that we are not empowered to do our job right now. Because Article 4, which is the executive, the mayor, was fully amended for the purpose of changing the form of government, and because the group was not allowed to do any other amendments to the—by the state law, the single-subject rule, you know, we've kind of, I think, all suffered a bit. And I don't mean just council. I mean, I don't think it's—it serves the city well to have a lack of checks and balances, lack of access to information, and a lack of clarity in the charter that this—and I can tell you, these changes bring all of that. I'm not saying that there couldn't be some more changes in the future. I think that's likely there will be. But this—this work really sets up, I think, very well the guardrails that we do need in a balanced government. Right now, we don't have that. This will go a long way. And I want to address one more thing. Partisan primaries—the fastest-growing part of our electorate is not Republican, and it's not Democrat, it's independents. They're more than 50%, and they don't vote in primaries. I—I don't know that—I want to start—I'm just saying, for me, I don't want to start out with—with—that deficit in the voter turnout. And I also completely agree with Councilman Cobb that—and actually, I'm going to let you say it because I don't think I could say it as well as you do—but talk about the—the topic that you brought up yesterday of a new council taking this up, if you would. Thank you.
Yeah. Being Cleveland Heights, everyone has got a different opinion. We are never going to reach any consensus prior to a vote on this charter as to what terms should be in it. We have kicked the can down the road now, going back to the Charter Review Commission that was formed in 2017 and met from 2017 to 2019. I was on that Charter Review Commission. Nothing ever came of that for all of the people that were on that committee that met going over three—over three different years. For this most recent charter review, we had nine people. We empowered them to make recommendations to city council. I think probably 90% or more of what they recommended is in this proposed charter. If we—I know this seems rushed, but if we don't put it on this ballot now—the other alternative is to hold a special election later this year. And I don't—and I would submit, we won't get any further along in terms of changing anyone's mind if we do decide to incur the expense of having a special election in December. If we don't have the special election, then we're going to go into next year. We're going to have potentially—for certain, we're going to have different council members. We're going to have a new mayor. You've heard someone talk about, well, the new mayor should have some input on the charter. Well, the new mayor will just be in office a short period of time, and there is so much work that will need to get done in the first few months. It's, I think, really unrealistic to expect that we're going to be any further along in terms of reaching more of a consensus on what ought to be in the charter that we submit to the voters if—if we wait until next year, and a new council could decide, well, we don't—we don't like it, we want to have another Charter Review Commission take a look at it. And keep in mind, this is—this isn't—council is deciding, yes, that this should go on the ballot, but it's up to the voters to make a decision about whether they like this charter or not. It's not like this is a piece of legislation that council is passing, and then the voters are—you know, the residents are stuck with the legislation that we've passed. This is—you know, we're giving it to the voters to make a decision, and if they feel that the process has been rushed, then they should vote no on it. But we—we have to make a decision. And I think now—if we don't do this now, when will we ever do it?
I hear you.
I sort of rambled on there.
Step up to the mic, please.
I don't know if councilperson Davida Russa was quoted 100%, but it said something about—you said something about it being hurried, and you think—I think it should wait. I'm paraphrasing what I read. And then Councilman Posh seemed like he's—on one hand, he said, it seems like we should take a pause. Councilman Maddox said the same thing, and for transparency. Maybe the outcome may not be any different, but voters, I think, would have more of a trust and even a better understanding what work you have put in thus far to get us to this point. I will admit, I have not gone to many council meetings myself unless it was something to do with my street directly. And I'm going to make more of a goal to come to more council meetings. So just that to—you know, not saying distrust, but for it be more transparent and not rushing it through where you had three, you know, hearings in one week. Okay, let's change this, let's change that. It's overwhelming. That's all I have to say.
And I would just add that the League of Women Voters is going to have a forum on this, and there will be opportunities. But I want to hear from others. Yes.
Councilwoman Larson.
I've participated in all of the recorded public charter review work sessions of council. I mean, I invested in those charter revisions, including the changes we made this evening, that the hard-working Charter Review Commission provided for council. The meetings of the Charter Review Commission are also recorded and available on the city's YouTube channel. The Law Department, specifically Bill Hannah and his staff, have been there every step of the way with us. They're the—they are the expertise backing us up when you ask about qualified. If we had questions about legality or what other cities are doing, Mr. Hannah and his staff would answer them for us. So we haven't been in this alone. Voters will have a good opportunity to study this document before the November election. I am always available for anyone who wants to discuss your questions and how we got here. My number is 253-691-2714. My email is glarson@clevelandheights.gov, and it's also on the website if you don't get a chance to write it down really quickly. I believe the Cleveland Heights charter that should be in place January 1, 2026, is one that aligns with our new form of government. I would like the new mayor to have this as a roadmap. I will be voting to move it forward to the November ballot rather than asking the 2026 council members to repeat this work. I also make a commitment, Ms. Applegate, that I will work hard to get the ranked choice voting on the May ballot.
So we're at council member comments now, so yes, go ahead.
Are we going to be discussing anything else? I have another comment about the charter. I mean, is our council member comments going to include those?
Sure.
Well, I just need to say that, yes, I did say pause, but I'm looking for my council peers to agree with that. And I don't see that happening right now. I cannot—I have to vote yes for this, and I have to vote yes because it is a good body of work, and it's going to—it's important for our citizens. And there's been a tremendous amount of work and effort that has been put into it. And I just think it's time for the community to give a thumbs up and thumbs down. There's some things that you may have to hold your nose on, but the overwhelming stuff that is in this document is going to help the city succeed, and it's going to set our new mayor up to succeed as well.
Thank you. Counselman Cobb?
Not to belabor the point, I think we really do a disservice to the hard work and the effort of the nine people that were on the Charter Review Commission if we don't put this on the ballot for November. And going forward, it's going to be very difficult, I think, to ever try and get qualified people that are willing to serve on a Charter Review Commission if, for the third time, we convene a Charter Review Commission and nothing comes of their work. So that's another reason, I think, why it's very important that we get this on the ballot. And if people don't like it and they have issues or concerns, then then vote no at the ballot box.
All right. Counselman Petrus, did you want to say anything? Okay. Vice President Russell?
Well, I still stay with the same thing. I think it's a—I'm not saying it shouldn't go on the ballot, but maybe pieces of it and parts, because I think it's a lot to digest for the residents. I don't think it's necessary for the whole piece to go on at one time, maybe some things that's necessary. I know I was on the Charter Review Commission for the county when they first changed over forms of government. There were a lot of revisions because it was a new form of government, which was much larger than Cleveland Heights, and none of those issues went on the ballot at one time. They went in pieces. And I just think that's what we need to be doing here, just to make sure that people understand what's going on. I think when people understand the process, what's in it, the reasoning behind certain things, people are more likely to vote for it versus not. I hate to put it all on the ballot, and then all of a sudden, everybody vote no because nobody understands it. And I would like to investigate the ranked choice voting. I'm not against it, I just don't fully understand it, and I'm willing to learn more about it. But that's the position I am at.
All right. Well, lastly, I'll say the charter is a very interdependent document. It's almost—and I hope I'm not sounding alarmist, but it's almost dangerous to do one part and not do the other because it all interacts together. So I'm absolutely for putting it—the complete document on. I do appreciate the work that the Charter Review Commission has done, and I know we all do. This is—a legislative function, very much so. At the federal level, the president has no say whatsoever in the Constitution about charter amendment—I'm sorry, about amendments to the Constitution. The process is layered out in Article 6—it's Article 5, I'm sorry. And it's very succinct about, you know, including the legislative bodies, both in Congress and at the state level. Those are the two bodies. It's a very much a legislative function. We are your representatives. You have placed a lot of trust in us, and we appreciate that. I'm satisfied that we've done our due diligence on this issue. It's—I'm glad we did this—all the sessions this week. On Tuesday, I'm certainly willing to listen to anybody who comes up. Nothing is a done deal on this council. We know that. We've—we've had people come up and say, is this not about the charter but about other things? Is this a done deal? Absolutely not. We deliberate until we're ready to vote, and I pledge to you that we'll do that. I want to thank all of you for engaging today. I think we moved the ball forward today. I think we're very close, if not there, and I look forward to addressing this issue on Tuesday. This meeting is adjourned at 8:08.